All right, thank you, folks. I want to call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled, called and convened Greer City Council meeting held this evening, November the 23rd, 2021. We appreciate you joining us. We have opened up some additional room for this meeting and there are a few chairs left here in the front and hopefully maybe some others scattered about during the course of this meeting. I am sure that we will have people leaving as their time before council comes up. So if you don't find a seat right now, I'm sure more will be available the rest of the meeting. We again appreciate your interest in the items listed in our agenda tonight and will proceed with that. Having opened the meeting, I'd like to ask Councilmember Judy Albert, if she would, lead us in the pledge of allegiance and then an invocation for council. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for this time of season when we come to you, thankful for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon all of us. Dear Lord, sometimes we just take for granted so many things when we look around and we take time. There's so many things that we can be thankful for and we thank you for this day. We thank you for the people that are here. We thank you for our city, our state, and our country. We pray that you will lead, God, and direct those that are in control now. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for public forum. Public forum is an opportunity for citizens of the city to address the council regarding items that may be on the agenda this evening. And so we are getting ready to begin that process. What I would ask of you this evening is that as I call your name, if you will come to the podium so that your comments can be recorded and give us your name and address as a matter of record. We have five people that have asked to appear before the council this evening. We will ask that you be mindful that others would like to speak as well too and keep your comments pointed and timely as you possibly can. We allow up to five minutes for comments, so if you see me giving you the high sign, you'll know you have used all of your five minutes. But we will begin that process now. And so it appears that Joe Davos Davalos is the first to ask to appear this evening. Joe, the podium is yours, sir.
Hey, sir, can you hear me? 303 Popular Drive, Greer, South Carolina. And I'm opposing about that 296 homes that you're going to put in that you're annex. And I'm not for it because I live right there on Popular. And what it's going to do is that Popular Drive is already a racetrack as it is. And you're going to have, I mean, you have the 750 homes you already approved up across the street from Greer High School. Then you got the Super Roads, got that right there at 14. You got the 400 houses on apartments and house, excuse me, houses on Victor Street. And this is just going to add just so much more congestion. And what it's going to do is they're going to end up going right down Roscoe to Popular and it's already a cut through. And you see how much people are going from 14 to 101. And then the biggest thing that kind of concerns me is there's no food stores down there. So you're going to approve this and then we're going to have like a Walmart next. You're going to have shopping centers down there next. And it's just, we're just going to become Woodruff Road and it's just insane now as it is. My daughter and my son both go to Greer High School and the biggest thing, it's two hours just to pick my daughter up. I mean, I'm leaving my house at 2:30 just to go pick her up. I'm not getting home almost 5:00. It's, you're going to add so much more traffic. And then the biggest thing is there's nothing here for kids 14 to 18 to do. Why can't we just use that property to do like a small little drive-in range, small little like couple pool tables, arcade, open bat, you know, batting cages where during the day like the elderly could use it, something cheap, not inexpensive, not like Topgolf. I mean, my kid works Domino's. He can't afford to go to Topgolf. Say you want to go on a first date with your girlfriend, take a mini golf, you know, go mini golf. But instead you're going to put a bunch of houses that they're selling as elderly houses, but none of the elderly can afford to live in them. Most people that are elderly are on disability, making a thousand bucks a month. You're going to sell them $1,200 home that they can rent, they can even go home. So that's basically all I have to say about it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Martin, Brian Martin.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name is Brian Martin. I live at 116 West Church Street. I'm here tonight to talk about the rezoning request of, that is item 61-2021, the residential property owned by Jessica and Joshua Robinson. And the request being to convert that property to a DRD for the purposes of, at some point in the future, having a 1,200 square foot residential accessory dwelling for Robinson's parents, which I do not have a problem with. And I don't think anybody in the community has an issue with that. The problem that I have and the reason I'm here today is that although I believe that DRD as a zoning designation is the only option that you have to allow this to do, for somebody to do this accessory dwelling, I firmly believe that using DRD in the historic district is going to open the door to the changing of the district. We've had this discussion before and I'm not going to go all the way back through it within just a couple minutes, a couple months ago that we were here on the same issue with Mr. Stagelberg and request for a DRD and the objections to that. And this is very different from that in that the building they're wanting to convert is already a building on the property, but it's a 16,000 square foot property. It's got a 15 or 1600 or 100 square foot house and they're adding a 1,200 square foot addition. The problem that I have with this is that it, nothing in the statement of intent restricts any use of this house for that purpose. It will be an accessory residential dwelling and staff has put the recommendation, as I understand, that the owners of the property have to live in either of those properties. But what it does allow is the opportunity for other property owners in the historic district to seek a DRD designation for their property for the purposes of doing the same thing and creating an income stream, creating a residential rental property as part of their property. And I believe we have lots of properties in the historic district that have the ability to be subdivided and I think it creates an opening for people to come in and do that. And I don't think that that is something that any of us want to see the historic district of Greer turn into a rental community. As I presented before Planning Commission a few weeks ago, and my understanding that currently you're assessing and staff is in the process of drafting a new UDO ordinance. In that ordinance, there's going to be regulations and things with regard to accessory dwelling buildings. The indication that the Robinsons gave when they presented Planning Commission, it did not seem that there was an urgent nature to get this done. And so one of the proposals I made was to at least postpone this until the UDO is done so that the buildings can be put in under the guidance that we have with that UDO. Just using the DRD under the blanket situation that we have now, I fear is going to create a bad situation for the city down the road. And that bad situation being that DRD has been used consistently for the last 15 years that I know of to allow townhome development in communities because we don't have another zoning designation that allows townhomes. If you approve this property as a DRD and then the property is sold and a future buyer desires to do a townhome community on this property, based on the history of how we have used DRD in this situation, you won't be able to say no. Or else you're going to be faced with the takings of claim and argument because this is how DRD has been used. I don't want you to open that door. I certainly have no problem with the Robinsons being able to use their property to care for their loved ones. The ideas that I come up with were request or have them revise the statement of intent to limit it to no rentals, that they won't rent the property. We've been talking about in the city, as and staff has mentioned, issues with VRBO and Airbnb and the lack of a mechanism to do that with. You have the power through the DRD by placing restrictions on what can be done within that development to put that restriction in it. And enforcement is the same as if they're using it for a purpose other than what was included in the statement of intent. Please look for another way. I don't want to hurt the Robinsons. I want them to be able to use this for their family, but DRD will open a door to a disaster in our historic district that we won't be able to undo. Thank you for your time.
My name is Elliot Ford. I live at 708 Popular Drive in Greer. I'm just outside the city. My property line and the city limit line is the same. All of these houses that are being built, 296, all of the water that comes off of these houses is going to come, my house will be the first house that it goes by. When I built my house in 1966, I was not even in the flood plain. The property line stayed as it was, the water stayed over there. But as it is right now, the new flood plain, which came out in April 20th of 21, this flood plain comes to my basement door now. 10 years ago, we had a flood somewhere along there. It took out the bridge on Popular Drive. It was a wooden bridge. It was the original bridge. It also shut down some apartments over there across the creek from me from Poplar Place. All of the ones that were down there put in next to the water line were flooded. Water was up to the door handle on the door. The fire department evacuated all of those people and put them somewhere that night. But I've tried, I've talked to the engineer in Greer and he gave me some new flood plain drawings. And that's when I came, it became aware to me that you were right at my back door. And so I'm wondering what's going to be done about that on these 296 houses? Has anybody got an answer?
We don't provide comment during the public forum, sir.
Okay. I presented it. I gave it to you.
Thank you, sir.
If anyone wants to see what the plan looks like, I can show you in 66. I'll also show you what they are now.
All right, thank you, sir.
Andrew Camp, 612 Popular Drive. I'm here to talk about these 296 houses. It's a great idea to build, build on that property, but the problem is our roadways cannot support 500 more vehicles on them. We got potholes in the city of Greer that if you hit them, you don't have to go get a lineman on your vehicle. And our solution is we put a piece of metal over the potholes. So what's going to happen when we have 500 more cars driving on these roads? It's just on where our roads out, they're already wore out. So I don't think it's smart to put that many more cars on the roads and introduce that many more residents to the city. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, my name is Ron Blackwell. I live at 119 Benjamin Avenue, Pleasant Grove. And I'm not a speech maker, I'm just a concerned resident. And you know, with the addition of 296 units on the side of Roscoe Drive, you're talking about roughly an average of three people per unit. So you're talking about 900 to 1,000 people and approximately 600 vehicles. And I just don't think the infrastructure is going to handle it to start with. But I'm 77 years old and I've been in Greer all my life, except four years in the military. And all of it's been in Pleasant Grove, all but when I was born, the first 16 years at Victor. And I'm really concerned about the area and the influx of people and, you know, and all the vehicles. And one, one thing I'm really concerned is they show two entrances off of that subdivision on the Popular Drive, I mean, Roscoe Drive. And most of them is going to cut through Pleasant Grove on Wood Drive to get out to Highway 14 at Pleasant Grove Church. And the other part's going to go down all the way to Popular Drive and try to get out to 80. And some of them's going to turn and go back to Mutt's, which is going to run into a problem. I'm sure you're going to have to put a traffic light in at Mutt's. And then the entrance that you got off of Highway 14 is, my understanding is going to be a right turn only and no left turn coming out of Greer. And you've just got 96 new units that's being built directly across the road that is just about finished now. So you're going to have a big bottleneck, you know, right there on 14 at Mutt's and not counting all the traffic that we're going to get through our subdivision. And we had a big turnout for the zoning board last week and I was hoping that, you know, maybe they'd listen to concerned citizens that we had, but undoubtedly, you know, they decided to vote in favor of it. And one question I asked them, and I'm asking y'all, do y'all actually go out and look at the area that's being involved in this additions? You know, I know most of y'all live in Greer and have been down through there, but have you actually ridden, ridden down there and just looked at this 34 to 36 acres that's going to handle all of these people and cars? And you got Juniper Ridge on the left side facing the property, which is single family dwellings. You've got Roscoe Drive on the right side at Pleasant Grove where I live. And then you've got Cliffside Drive on the other end, which is all single family dwellings. And so I would suggest, if you could, to make this like R15 or R18 zoning, which would handle single family dwellings and each house would have approximately a half an acre lot. And that's.
One minute. One more minute.
Yeah. And so this, this is our main concern. So if you could take this into consideration, at least go down and look to see what's going to be involved in this addition, what we're going to be faced with in our neighborhood that I've lived there for the last 50 years. So, thank you.
Counsel, always good to recognize employees as we do from time to time for time served. That doesn't sound too good, does it, for time served? For the time that they have been employed by the city. And so it is our opportunity to do that this evening. We have a number of employees that have reached anniversaries here at this time of year. So we obviously in the past have been busy hiring and as we get to the holiday season. And so what I would like to do is offer a resolution and then we will make some personal presentations, but the resolution reads as such, "Whereas the City of Greer endeavors to recognize and reward its dedicated and faithful employees. Whereas Corey Dillon Blackwell has served in the Fire Department for five years. Thomas Gregory has served in the Fire Department for five years. Michael Doc Haddon has served in the Police Department for five years. Michael Kimbler has served in the Police Department for five years. Sarah Melton has served in the Police Department for five years. Andrew Morgan has served in the Fire Department for five years. Sarah Odom has served in the Recreation Department for five years. James Sharada has served in the Police Department for 10 years. Scott Tompkins has served in the Fire Department for 10 years. James Ryan Winger has served in the Police Department for 10 years. Carlos Arias Cortez has served in the Fire Department for 15 years. Corey Holtzclaw has served in Parks and Recreation for 15 years. David Trey Leester has served in the Fire Department for 15 years. Dale Ardburn has served in the Police Department for 25 years. Marcus Shields has served in the Police Department for 25 years. John Poulsen has served in the Fire Department for 25 years. And Todd Wilson has served in the Fire Department for 25 years. Whereas these employees have served in an distinguished and professional manner, now be it therefore resolved that City of Greer, South Carolina, in a meeting duly assembled, wishes to officially recognize and commend these employees for their distinguished and dedicated service which they have performed. Be it further resolved that the City of Greer hereby rewards these dedicated employees with a certificate of appreciation and administrative day off with pay approved this day, the 23rd of November 2021." I'd like to ask the city administrator to join me at the front and. Well, that's always the problem with firemen. They have to leave in the middle of an event. Never know how long they're going to be able to stay. Dillon Blackwell. Folks, if y'all will stay with us for just a minute as we make this presentation and we'll get a picture. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Appreciate it, sir. Thank you. Michael Kimbler. I started to say, I started to say Mikey, but come on up, Mike. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Time flies. Thank you. Thank you. Don't you start lying over here on the other side right here. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, folks, let's pull in a little bit and see if we can get a picture. How about that? community in different kinds of ways. And we have one of those occasions this evening. And I am going to ask Kelsey Pranka, if she would, to come to the front. You've got quite the fan club over there in the corner. Oh, you're, okay. Folks, since age four, Kelsey has had a big heart for helping others and she saw how someone didn't have much food and asked if she could collect food for Halloween instead of candy one year. With her positive attitude and Jesus in her heart, she went door to door with her little red flyer wagon toting all the goods along the way. She made her very first delivery to Greer Relief in 2005 and now, 15 years later, raised more than $20,000 worth of food, clothing, and blankets. And she keeps on going. Throughout the years, she has volunteered for more than 200 different organizations and events and this can-do attitude allowed her to be recognized with seven Presidential Community Service Awards and the Quality of Life Award. She has met with the Governor of South Carolina, the Honorable Henry McMaster, and Lieutenant Governor Pam Ebbett and Representative Rita Allison, sharing her platform for mental health matters. This also allowed her to be a catalyst to make a stronger emphasis on teachers being certified to understand mental health issues and depression in South Carolina's largest school district. Having given more than 500 hours through the global pandemic, she didn't let anything stop her from helping and promoting the City of Greer as Miss Greer Team, Greater Greer Team. You saw her at COPS for Tots, CPW's Drug Takeback Program, Seal Seal Toy Fundraiser, Heroes Recognition Day, Love Greer Day, speaking at schools, Big Thursday Auction, Classic Car Shows, and in race cars going 100 miles an hour at the Greer Speedway. Though she didn't win the state crown, she won the hearts of many in her community. And by her true beauty on the inside, we recognize Kelsey Pranka with a key to the city. with a key to the city.
Hi, everyone. I'm currently a student at Clemson University. Go Tigers! And Greer will always have a very special place in my heart. Not only my hometown, but many loved ones that I have here. But it's, it's times like these when I'm grateful, not just to be a recipient of this award, but also from my roots. I'm thankful to have been given many opportunities that I, I just can't even begin to explain how grateful I am. And the only reason why I do this, well, not the only reason, but the biggest reason is because when I was saved, when I was a young girl, I realized that we need to find a way to show others Jesus' love. And so through that, I've been using my community service to help people and hopefully give a little bit of that love back to my community. So thank you all for coming here tonight. And thank you to our city council.
Thank you. We want to thank Kelsey for joining us this evening. I believe that she has traveled over from Clemson and apparently traffic was pretty bad this evening, from what I understand. So thank you for making the effort. I don't know that it was a total surprise, but our, my office and her mother have worked closely on trying to keep this as much of a surprise as, as we possibly could. So congratulations. Thank you for all that you have done for the ci- excuse me, City of Greer. Now then, I will, um... Need to go back and take care of some business before we move on. And that is the minutes of the council meeting. Council, you've got the minutes from the November 9th meeting contained in your packet. I'll entertain a motion that they be received.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing done, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. I don't believe I see her. Is Mrs. South with us this evening? Okay, she may not have been able to join us. We've got one more recognition this evening. And that is a proclamation that will be presented to the Greer Development Corporation. A proclamation reads as such: "Whereas the government of the City of Greer, South Carolina, celebrates all of our local small businesses and the contributions that they make to our local economy and committee. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States and they represent 99.9% of all firms with paid employees in the United States and are responsible for 65.1% of all new net jobs created from 2000 to 2019. Whereas small business employs 41% of all employees in the private sector in the United States, 62% of U.S. small businesses reported that they need to see customer spending return to pre-COVID levels by the end of 2020 in order to stay in business. 65% of U.S. small business owners said it would be most helpful to their business to have their regulars return and start making purchases again. And three quarters of U.S. consumers are currently looking for ways to shop small and support their local community. 96% of consumers who shop on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at a small, independently owned business supports their community to make purchases that have a positive social, economical, and environmental impact. And 97% of customers who shop at a Small Business Saturday agreed that the small businesses were essential to their community. 95% of consumers also shop on Small Business Saturday reported that the day makes them want to shop and eat at more small, independently owned businesses all year long, not just during the holiday season. Therefore, the City of Greer supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community. advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have joined together this Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Therefore, but let it be resolved that I, Mayor Rick Danner, and the City of Greer Council do hereby proclaim November 27th, 2021, a Small Business Saturday and urge residents of our community and communities across the country to support small business merchants on Small Business Saturday throughout the year. And we will present that to, uh, to the Local Development Corporation, who assist us with downtown development and economic matters. All right, council. I think I'm caught up. With that then, we'll move to departmental reports. And contained in your packet are those reports from October of this year. You are, you can always ask the administrator for information if you need a little deeper dive on any of those or department heads. We'll be glad to help you as well. Ms. Howell joins us this evening for a financial update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm presenting the financial results as of October 31st, 2021. Starting with the general fund. $1 million of revenue was collected in October for a year-to-date total of $3,639,000. Operational expenditures totaled $3 million in October, and there was a fund balance usage of $19,000, which resulted in year-to-date total expenditures of $10,504,000, which is 1% over budget. You refer to the dashboards where we compare actuals to benchmarks. You'll see that we do have a negative overall variance there of $755,000. But we do have a cash balance in the general fund of $10,702,000. Moving on to the hospitality fund. In October, we collected almost $242,000, giving us a year-to-date total of $977,000. Year-to-date expenditures are $76,000, and the cash balance in the hospitality fund is $2.2 million. Finally, the stormwater fund. We have a year-to-date revenue of $16,000, expenditures of $602,000, and a cash balance in the stormwater fund of $2.2 million as well. It's a brief summary, but I'll be happy to answer any questions if I can.
I have a question. I don't know if it's a bit early to be talking about budget, but I did notice where our, eight, the subdivision money's going to be, about $827,000. Are we still budgeting at a lower percentage, or did we quit doing that?
I believe we quit doing that.
Okay. Have we earmarked those funds for anything in particular every year?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
No, sir, we've not.
Obviously, the wheels are turning.
We look forward to more.
Thank you. Others? Ms. Howell, thank you for the update. We appreciate it. Mr. Merriman, we are at your report, please, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you so much. A few things I wanted to bring up tonight. First of all is, as you are aware, the census has been delayed due to a number of reasons, primarily COVID-19 related. And as a result of the census being delayed and the results of the census being delayed, the redistricting process that we would have ordinarily have gone through at this time was delayed. But I'm letting you now know that we have begun the process of the data finding and preliminary work, working with the state Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office to begin the redistricting process. So be on the lookout. We will be keeping in contact with you as to the schedule. But we look to have some community meetings or at least a community meeting at the beginning of the year, sometime in the first couple of months of the year. So we, that is an ongoing process. Couple of things that are going on, I want to remind you of. First and foremost, the tree lighting ceremony is on the 3rd. The Christmas parade will be on the 5th. And of course, we'll be working with Greer Relief to, Greer Relief will be working with us to make that happen. We're real excited about it. We have the employee appreciation breakfast, which we do every year, is going to be held on the 10th, Friday the 10th. And, um, look at my notes here, make sure I don't forget anything. And the last thing is, we will be hosting on December 11th at Country Club Park, the first annual Greer Christmas Sevens Rugby Tournament. We will have college sides coming from all over the state and parts of North Carolina and Georgia. And we will have high school teams coming from Indiana, Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina, Tennessee, and Georgia. So we look forward to hosting these teams coming into Greer and participating in this tournament.
What park is that going to be?
It'll be at Country Club Park.
Country Club.
Yes, sir. With that, Mr. Mayor, unless there are any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Council, let's move to appointments to boards and commissions. In regards to the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, it would appear that staff has recommended that Mr. Buddy Waters, Mr. Keith Smith, and Mr. Bill Ratu all have agreed to serve another term. I would offer that as a motion and would ask for a second.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Questions?
What are the requirements, because obviously it's not a city resident requirement? It's dictated by the state.
It's professional appointments.
Professional appointments.
It is a professional appointment.
Ms. Helms is here if you have any questions, ma'am.
Yeah. Ms. Helms, if you want to address it, I, it's, we, we don't, this is not one that we do by districts, and it is also professional driven. So you may want to add, add to that.
Yes, sir. It does require professional appointments. An architect, engineer, and contractor in construction experience.
Other questions? Comments in that regard? Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Let's move to the Recreation Association Board of Trustees. Mr. Griffin is not with us this evening. District Four has an appointment that will come open at the end of the year. And District Six, um... Has an appointment coming open at the end of the year. Ms. Albert or, um... Mr. Dumas, do y'all have a recommendation this evening?
Yes, Jason Bridle has expressed his desire to remain on the board. He's attended probably more than half of the meetings.
Comes as a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions of his service? Hearing done, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Mr. Dumas?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Trevor Hoffman has expressed interest in staying on the Recreation Board. And so I'd like to nominate him for another term, please.
Comes as a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Floor's open for discussion. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
I have a question. I noticed on the attendance for those members, why are the number of meetings, why do they vary among the different members? You would think everybody would be scheduled for every Recreation Board meeting.
Appears Ms. Wise is going to help us with an answer to that. Would you come to the front, please, ma'am?
It's based on when they came on to the board. So some of them have not served as many terms as others or as many years on the board as others. So that's why there are variants.
So this is a historic?
Yes.
Number of?
Yes, sir.
Not just for the year?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
With that, council, let's move to... Items of old business. Ms. Cotty joins us this evening. This is the second and the final reading of an ordinance number 16-2021. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation, excuse me, of property owned by Bruce and Donna Davidson located at 1785 East Point Set Street by 100% petition and to establish its own classification of I-1 for said property. Ms. Cotty, any newer additional information in regards to ordinance number 16-2021?
A planning commission held a public hearing for this back in April of 2021 and recommended approval. It was on hold until the property closed. But they did recommend approval, and that's the only update that I have.
Comes with a recommendation for approval. For the purposes of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. And a second.
Second.
Floor's open for discussion.
This is the site where it's going to be Asphalt Paving Company?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Comments? Questions? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number 56-2021. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of properties owned by Next Gen Investments LLC, located on South Main Street and Roscoe Drive by 100% petition and to establish its own classification of DRD for said property. Ms. Cotty, newer additional information in regards to ordinance number 56-2021?
Sure. Planning Commission held a public hearing last Monday evening, and they did recommend approval.
For the purposes of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive ordinance number 56-2021. Comes to council with motion for recommendation.
So move.
Second. Floor's open for discussion.
Let me just address a few of the concerns. Traffic, of course, our infrastructure. Again, prior to development, a meeting is held with the developer and all entities involved, which includes school board, South Carolina DOT, CPW, whoever else may be involved. And they provide input if, if it's going to be negative, positive, and then DOT gives what they say has to be done through the roads. And that has taken place.
Yes, sir.
The, the other item that, and this is a big concern because at one time, this did not happen, but it does happen, and it is watched like an eagle. We had a gentleman tonight speak about water runoff. And the, any development, any new development that takes place is required by law to have the same flow rate, which would include gallons and how fast it flows off a property. It has to be the same as it was prior to development. That's why you have the, that's why you have retention ponds and so on and so forth. And I see some people shaking their head, and that's fine. But that's, that's the law. We live in a very desirable area. Very. If your history, and I know some of you go back further than me, but my adult history, I guess, starts in the 80s. And in the 80s, early 80s, you could have bought downtown Greer for what you would pay for half of a building. You could have bought all of downtown Greer. Buildings falling in, so on and so forth. Things were done in order to attract business, so on. And you see, and this is not just something that happened yesterday. This has been going on. Thankfully, council, prior to my coming on board and then after I got on board, has always been dedicated to realizing that growth is going to happen. If, if only based always been dedicated to realizing that growth is going to happen, if only based on our location. We have a choice. Let things develop as randomly, or do our best to manage growth. And given what we have with zoning, given what we have with utilities, roads, everything is looked at with a fine-tooth comb. And we, as a city as a whole, which you guys are involved in, we value the information and input that you bring forward, but we do our very best to manage the growth. You're not going to stop it. You've got to make a decision. Either manage it or step back and just let it happen. And if you have vacant property, you know the value of it. It's gone from here to, you know, it's out of sight. And so, you know, we all believe, on this council, in private property rights. And we believe people within reason can do certain things with their property. But that's within reason. We do hear everybody who speaks. I think this will be a good development. If you've, and I'm sure you all have, you've looked at what this group has done in the past in Alabama, what they intend to do now. I think it will be positive. It will be... It'll be a positive thing. And you can be thankful that there will be a lot of folks that look over a lot of shoulders making sure things are done correctly.
Thank you, sir. Weathers?
Yes. During the traffic studies, those have been done correctly? Have they allowed for any provisions or any conditions to be improved on Roscoe? And like the entrance onto 14 and the entrance onto Poplar, which where a lot of people here had the issues with Poplar Drive?
Sure. Traffic studies are typically for improvements at intersections, like adding turn lanes or signalizing intersections. So SC DOT did recommend to do a signal warrant study at that main light by Mutt's once this project is built out. And they did restrict entrance and exit to right-in, right-out only. As far as pavement condition and road condition, the land development regulations that the city has in place, that this council actually adopted amendments to this past year, require that all roads adjacent and part of the project be up to city standards. So Roscoe will be evaluated, and I... At this point, I don't know exactly how wide it is, but I don't believe it meets current city standards. So the developer will be responsible for widening Roscoe Road and dedicating that right-of-way in order to both widen and accommodate exterior sidewalks. So they will be doing widening and improvements on Roscoe Road.
They will be doing work on Roscoe to widen it, because I do travel that road a good bit myself. And I know that it's very narrow and trying to pass somebody and maybe not hit somebody's mailbox or whatever, because they're right there on the street, too. It is difficult at times, so.
Yes, I believe it's somewhere between 18 and 20 right now, and our city standards would require 24 feet of pavement. So they definitely will be doing some widening. And those exact improvements will be determined at the time of civil plans if this project is approved and moves forward.
Any additional... Would that provide for any additional turn lanes or...?
The traffic study did not call for additional turn lanes.
Not at Poplar nor 14.
What does an exit down on Poplar have?
No, she's talking about the intersection.
The intersection.
Yeah. Where it goes to... Roscoe goes down to Poplar.
Right.
That intersection...
That roadway's not... Just so everybody can understand, from South Main down to the end of that property is what... If we finish with the annexation, that part of roadway will be annexed in, and that part will be subject to development standards.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Yes. That Poplar intersection was included in the traffic study, however.
Does that section of road come into the city? Or is that...
Yes, it is part of the annexation.
Now, Poplar is... Well, is that a state, a county or a state or...?
I'm not certain on Poplar. Roscoe is currently county, but the city will be taking it into inventory.
Oh, okay. So once Roscoe... Once this comes in, then Roscoe will be a city road?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct? Okay.
Again, though, I think it raises an interesting point, because to Mr. Airwood's comments earlier, the alternative is that if it doesn't get built in the city, then there are no regulations in some regards about what has to take place. And, you know, there are conditions beyond our control, whether or not the county does anything about the rest of Roscoe once we've made improvements on the piece that will come into the city. So I think there's a valid argument to the comments that were made earlier in regards to the quality of development that occurs inside the city as opposed to that that doesn't. And I think we miss... I think we miss the point sometimes of what the intention and purpose of the Planning and Zoning Committee and even the council is, is in regards to the actions that we take. Mr. Airwood mentioned that your comments are valuable, and indeed, they are. I mean, we listen to your comments. The issue then becomes that regardless of how passionate you are about a property changing hands and changing purposes, what we make a decision on is the legal framework, the legislative framework that surrounds that change. And so while we may consider additional considerations for traffic and/or schools and/or other things that come up, we have very little or no control in a lot of those cases. And so it behooves us to study ways that we can make improvements and work with others to improve the situation around these new developments. But you'll often find that the county nor the state or others in some cases are willing participants to do that. So I think we need to understand that we have a comprehensive plan that is done every 10 years and updated every five years. And that defines what we say is appropriate in an area, and then that also defines by the ordinance what is going to go there. And if the request is appropriate and it fits within the law and the ordinance, then we are, in some regards, bound to observe that. It was kind of interesting. Mr. Martin made a comment earlier about takings. Most people don't realize that if we artificially impact the value of property, we can be held financially responsible. Do you realize that Greenville County has spent over half a million dollars in the last two years settling lawsuits, overtakings? Stop and think about that for a minute. That's money you've paid to Greenville County that they're turning around and paying to individuals because an action that they took limited that person's ability to sell their land for the highest and best use. So let me pose a question to you, and you don't have to answer, because we didn't answer in public forum. But how many of you want more government intervention in your land and your property? How many of you want us to make a decision about what you sell your property for? How many of us want... How many of you want us to determine what you can do with your own private property? It's market-driven. And if you want to use it another way, purchase it and do whatever you want to with it. But if it comes to us and it is in, within the parameters of our planning and zoning, we're going to pass it regardless of how passionate you are about it. Let me ask you something. If you were going to witness to somebody about their salvation, would you not take a Bible with you? How many people stand up at this podium to protest the project that haven't looked at the comprehensive plan or the ordinance? If you stand up there and don't make a comment to the comprehensive plan or to the ordinance, you've just told us that you haven't read either one of those documents. And that's our guiding light. That's what we go by. Comments were made tonight about a completely different subject. And there was no discussion about whether or not he liked the project or didn't like the project, or liked the person, or didn't like the person, or whatever it was. But it was factual-based, and that's what we have to consider. So as we move forward through this process, please understand that we hear what you're commenting about, and we can address some of those situations in time. How many people in here even realize that we have in this, within the confines of this meeting, a development agreement where the developer is going to pay for additional improvements out there? You know, we do our best to make sure that the development that takes place inside the city occurs with the best intent and the best design and the best project that we possibly can. And we understand that's not popular with everybody, but we're doing what we think is best within the parameters that we've been given to make these decisions. Others?
Yeah, I know a lot of people... You hear a lot of complaints from people about the city annexing. Well, we don't really go out and solicit for different properties to come into the city. I don't know of any that we've actually gone out and asked to come into the city. The owners of the property, sometimes, you know, it stays in a family forever. I know a lot of... Couple of people commented on the older brick home that's down there. And, you know, going by there myself, I've always enjoyed seeing the changes that they made to the small frame house right there on the corner. And, you know, with the animals and things like that. But apparently, as it goes down in family, the property doesn't mean as much to maybe the person that owns it then, and they've got other things that they need to carry their life on. And so they come to a point that they don't really need that land, and they get an offer of some amount of money that will help them in their now life, and they'd prefer to have that than to have that land. And so once it comes to us, and then they come to us and asking for annexation. But a lot of comments that I hear sometime kind of implies that the city's responsible for all the annexation. But as to the mayor's point, if some of it was not annexed and was not under the control of the city guidelines and things, then, you know, the county, they could still build on those properties and build maybe a lot more different things than what you would want. So it's not... People blame it on the city for annexation, but we don't go out and solicit it. It comes to us requesting it. And the people that sold the property really didn't care anymore about the property and needed the other funds to move on with their life. So, you know, once it's sold, then it can be built on or whatever they want to, whether it's brought into the city or not. And I know we all get used to Greer being Greer, but you can look around and you can see that things now with so much construction going on everywhere. Regardless of where you drive or ride to, you'll see new development going on. And I know a lot of us, you know, I really not that fond of all the new development that's going on either, but we have a lot of people moving into this area and providing homes for them, you know? And it just gets to be a chain-driven thing here. From family, they have to sell the property, and the person that buys the property, then they decide what they're going to do with it. So, and it's like the mayor said, if you, you know, want the property and had the chance, and if you don't want anything else to happen to it, then I guess somehow or other, you'd have to figure out, I'd buy it. But just wanted to kind of explain that, because I do see it all the time, kind of blaming the city did this and the city did that.
Counsel, the family has provided us some information that's at your desk. There were a few extra copies. They are here with Ms. Duncan. The clerk gives you an overview of the property as provided by the family and answers some questions, things that I didn't know. And we were also able to glean a lot more information after a lengthy conversation with the family he met with the developer this afternoon as well, too. And so you've got that information. You've also got a picture of Mr. James himself in 1897 in front of the home that is at the corner of Hammock Bridge and Buncombe.
Yep. Yes. Okay.
So you've got that information there as well. Further comments? Questions? Dialogue?
I did have a quick question. It talks about that proposed mix between the cottages and townhomes. Do you know exactly what the mix looks like or, you know, what the numbers are going to be?
I don't have that on hand, but the applicant is here.
Mr. Weathers is with us this evening. Mr. Weathers is with Leo Construction. Would you like to address that, sir?
I'm happy to answer. I don't have the exact numbers right now. I'll talk my hand.
If you'd like to come to the podium, we'll make that a matter of the record.
Scott Weathers, 214 Corley Street, Atlanta, Georgia, 30312. To answer your question, the mix between townhomes, and when you look at those as townhomes, we do attach and detach units, which are... We call them twins, but they're duplex. And so the townhomes are usually two- to three-bedroom units, two-story units. And roughly about 60% of them are attached units, and 60 to 70 is attached units and 30 to 40 is detached units.
I'm sorry. Say that last piece again.
So roughly 60 to 70% of them are attached units, and about 30 to 40% are usually detached. A lot of that design is determined by the layout of the property and how the inner roads have to be laid out.
Gotcha. And then the piece on the materials with the combination of lappen, board, and batten siding, is that a vinyl product or is that... What are you looking for?
No, sir. That's going to be a hardy plank style siding that is... We build these to hold, and we want a building material that's going to last, and we use something that's going to be there for 30 years without having to be replaced. So it's... We don't use vinyl siding.
And then, so this is obviously a unique development in that this is... You're going to retain ownership of these units once you...
Correct. Yes, sir. We're a vertically integrated development company, where we have a management company that will be managing the property. There will be approximately five to seven onsite staff daily.
And your target... What is your target rent rate?
Between $1,200 and $2,500, depending on one, two, and three-bedroom units.
Others?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Comments? Discussion? Questions? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number 57-2021. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a portion of two properties owned by True North Properties LLC located on South Highway 14 by 100% petition and to establish its own classification of DRD for said property. This is the companion...
North Properties LLC, located on South Highway 14 by 100% petition, and to establish a zoning classification of DRD for said property. This is the companion piece of property to ordinance number 56-2021. New or additional information on number 57-2021? Scotty?
No, sir.
No, do, no, excuse me. No new additional information in that regard, I'll entertain a motion to receive. And a second. Floor's open for discussion. Comments?
Would you tell me a little bit about the, the buffering that's gonna be provided to the adjacent neighborhood?
Um, so there'll be, typical of most DRDs, there'll be a 25-foot building setback, and then there's roadside buffers. Let me see if I can get this slide up with the layout. Sorry, it's up on screen now. So there'll be a 25-foot setback around the entire perimeter of the site. And then most of the area around the creek will remain undisturbed.
And as far as, I, I know we haven't talked about traffic lights, and I know that's DOT deal, but do you think they'll proactively look at this intersection and determine if they need traffic lights or any type of?
Yeah, so they have reviewed the study, and they have said that once, if this project is approved and once it's built out, that they will do a signal warrant study at the
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number 58-2021. This is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a development agreement by and between the city of Greer, South Carolina, and Abenar Oakley Development Group LLC, where it's assigned with respect to infrastructure improvements in the city of Greer and other matters related thereto. Mr. Mayor, mean, any new or additional information in regards to ordinance number 58-2021?
No, sir.
Entertain a motion to receive. And a second. Floor's open for discussion. Questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel has moved to new business, the first of which is the bid summary for tankless water heaters. Josh Holtimer, Deputy Fire Chief, joins us this evening for that conversation.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Mr. Holtimer, if you will, let's allow folks to, to leave. We, we don't wanna miss a minute of the bid summary on tankless water heaters. Floor's yours, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I do come to you tonight, we in the, during the budget process, we budgeted funds to replace our hot water heaters with tankless hot water heaters in the fire, in all our fire stations. We developed an RFP and sent that RFP out, and we required sealed bids. On 11/18, we opened those sealed bids, and we had one sealed bid for the amount of $19,025 from RSI Carolina. And with that, staff recommends awarding that to RSI Carolina for the installation of those tankless hot water heaters.
Counsel, with the recommendation from staff, do I hear a motion to receive? And a second. Floor's open for discussion. Is this some type of heavy-duty, major, large-capacity thing?
Well, it's three stations. It's the, the main stations requiring two because of the number of showers and hot water that we use. And so they are a little bit more industrial, and they have to include, increase the gas line that's going upstairs. So that's one of the processes. And then the other two stations are smaller units.
Okay. Well, that makes a lot more sense with three.
Why, why did, why did, why was the decision to, made to go tankless?
That was a recommendation for, after researching some of them and talking with some of our service technicians about our water usage and the number of people taking showers, the washer and dryer and that kinda stuff, or the washing machine, we running out of hot water regularly. They said with the two units, it could keep up with our capacity.
Was that the, I mean, did they not recommend looking to engineer tank water heaters that would keep up?
I don't, I don't know that the storeroom upstairs, you know, you're well aware of that, I don't know that we could get another one with that size up there and meet within
Others? I like, I've got tankless now, and you don't run out of water, but you wait a long time getting it sometimes.
Is this within budget?
Yes, sir. It's under budget, actually.
True, strange on a project the size to get one quote.
It could be because there are much of duty.
It, it could be, but that's, how many folks did we send, send requests to?
I would have to check with Tracy, and, well, it went out to a good number of people. We, we had people that came by and, and toured all our stations and gave us a quote of error, said they were gonna give us quotes or follow the process, but they did not.
Gotcha. If this falls through, I know a guy. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. First reading of ordinance number 60-2021. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Napoleon Foster, located on Valentine Lane from I-1 to DRD. Ms. Scotty?
Sure. This is a rezoning request for one parcel. Again, it's on Valentine Lane, near the intersection with Blackwell Road and Lister Road. And this is for a townhome community with up to 130 units. This is the current zoning of the site. Again, it's currently zoned I-1 Industrial. The red color that you see to the right is C-2. The fuchsia color is C-3, and then adjacent is R-12 Single Family Residential. The future land use map calls for traditional neighborhood and suburban commercial in this area. And then this is a current street view of the site. This is, um, this is the site plan that is, that accompanies the statement of intent. This site plan does show only 109 units. Again, the statement of intent allows for up to 130, but it is likely, given some of the turnarounds that were needed with the hammerheads, that, that number will stay closer to the 109 level. And then as far as the statement of intent, again, this is for up to 130 units. They range from 1,500 to 3,000 square feet, three to four bedrooms. The density is 6.4 units per acre. It does have over 10 acres of open space, which is more than 50% of the site's acreage. And they have the typical setbacks for a townhome and DRD community. Again, that 25-foot perimeter setback, and then 20-foot setback along interior streets. Again, this has pretty similar materials that we typically ask for, and then the HOA will maintain the stormwater and common areas. They did complete a traffic impact analysis. It was reviewed by our third-party engineer. There is potential for restriping on Valentine Lane. And then also, just what I mentioned earlier with our land development regulations, the engineering department will review Valentine Lane during the civil plan review process, and if it does not meet city standards, they will be required to widen their portion of Valentine Lane. And Planning Commission did hold a public hearing last Monday evening, and they recommended approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Thank you, sir. Are you available for questions if they come up?
Yes, sir.
Are these townhomes gonna be sold or rented?
Ms. Albert, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to accept ordinance 6061, and that is your motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Floor's open for discussion.
Yes, ma'am. I would have to defer to the applicant. That information was not included in the statement of intent.
Sir, if you would, if you'll identify yourself and give us an address, please, sir.
My name is Austin Allen. I'm the project designer. My address is 49 Greenland Drive, Greenville, South Carolina, 29615. In, in regards to your question, we are not specifying at this point. My, I, I would lean based off conversations I've had that these will be for sale. However, my client has multiple streams of which they do development, one of which is a strictly rental development. We have not done one for them yet. So the answer is, they will likely be, be for sale, but I don't wanna limit the ability for them to be potentially be rented.
In the statement of intent, it, it leaked, I think, about this while ago, but it misses board and batten siding. Now, does it, is that intended to be vinyl, a vinyl product, or cementitious product?
So the, the way that's worded in the current situation that we're in, so after, after, I guess, our initial conversations with planning staff, for a reason that I'm not aware of, something between my client and a builder didn't work out. I think the builder may have not signed contract, or whatever it may have been. But we're, we're currently in between builders. So we kind of wanted to be as inclusive as possible, but represent, you know, at least a, a minimum. But the goal of the, of that statement is, is, like I said, not to limit, but, you know, to also allow, if, if a new builder comes online, they have somewhat freedom of say, well, we gotta do hardy plank or nothing. You know, that, that would be, or especially now, what we run into is, you know, like we have apartment builders that typically build more with wood materials. The last project they did, they, you know, they did the facade three-force brick, because at the time, brick was cheaper than, you know, hardy plank, whatever they were using, so.
The reason I'm asking is I, I don't know with the DRD that, I, I got, you want, you want some flexibility. But I was buying a, a development today that was a DRD, and kinda the same statement, their statement of intent about products to be used. And the, their townhomes, ends of the buildings which face a heavily traveled road, vinyl siding, and you can see how, you know, it, it was not a good job. All the buildings are put up, and it doesn't look well. So I didn't know, I mean, it...
Can you go back to the statement of intent, please?
Yes, and so, um, in some areas of the city, staff has kind of drawn a hard line and said that it has to be hardy plank. In this area of town, staff didn't, when the, when they wanted flexibility, we didn't think, just given the market and other developments that are nearby, we didn't hold them to that standard, but that's certainly something that counsel can include as an amendment if it's important.
So it could always, it could be 100% vinyl lap siding?
Um, so in this case, it could. Many of the DRDs that you've seen recently require hardy board and a combination, and a minimum of a certain amount of materials.
Right, it's a percentage down. Just of what they, what they have to...
Some of them have percentages, and a lot of them have the requirement for at least...
I don't think that I've seen one of this.
Do we sometimes require a, a multipurpose kind of attack? Don't we sometimes say a minimum of three different types of...
Yes. So often, often in the ones that are required to be hardy board, we also require a minimum combination of two accent materials. So that's certainly something that could be amended if that's the will of the council.
There, there's no requirement for brick, cementitious siding, which hardy board is just night brown, but wood, there's, there's, it's just, it can be anything, really, any kind of material.
Sir, do you have any idea in terms of process and procedure where y'all are in terms of making these decisions? This is first, my, my thought process is that this is first reading, that this might be something that we might want to move forward on, on first reading, but take a closer look before second reading. So any idea about when those types of decisions might be made?
So we are, my client's due diligence period, I wanna say ends at the, at the very end of this year. So really, this would be, how this goes is contingent, I guess, upon the direction they go with the builder at this point, but they would need to make a decision prior to that, I would imagine, for their, for their closing. Typically with these meetings, we don't invite the developer for a multitude of reasons, but if, if y'all feel that it's necessary to, to have a discussion with them prior to second reading specifically about the units, I know they would be happy to meet. And, and maybe at this point, they could provide additional information as to more of a direction that they're going with an actual material or a builder that potentially we could, you know, show up. This is a similar architecture style type situation.
I would suggest, based on our conversation, that, um, I, I would be willing to vote for first reading if you would be willing to have those folks meet with our staff for a review of the project. We are cutting it close on time to meet your developers' deadline. We'll only have one meeting in December, so I would suggest a sense of urgency about that meeting. And I would also suggest a sense of urgency about a serious approach to exterior siding gathered, after you have gathered information here tonight. I don't think that any of us are, are opposed to, I mean, I can't speak for everyone. I don't know that I would be opposed to some of the project having vinyl siding, again, based on the surrounding properties, but I think it's important for us to, Mr. Airwood's point to, to provide a product that may help bring the standard of the other homes up to, to new projects, so. Others?
Also, it would be nice to know if it was gonna be rental, or if you're gonna be selling the units, too, because I think we would factor that into our decision, you know, as far as the, because if you, if you convert those to single-family homes or townhomes, they're gonna be owned, then, you know, that's a different situation than that they're gonna be a rental product. And so I think that would be of interest to us, too, if you could go ahead and start nailing that piece down, too, when you have that conversation with the developer.
So I'd have to go back to the, because this came from the planning commission, right? The statement of intent, is it, if it's gonna be amended, does, does planning commission have to look at it again, or is that amended? Okay.
No. No, that could be amended and brought back as an amended exhibit to the ordinance.
Others? Is there gonna be a development agreement with this project, Counsel?
No, sir. This property is already in the city limits.
Did they give any thought to just building single-family homes?
Yeah, so that's, that's one of the things we looked at initially. Unfortunately for this site, the topo is, is a nightmare. I don't believe you would be able to get the density required to be able to make it a feasible development. Yeah, based off what we were able to get, where we're at now with the 109, from what I understand, that's, that's very close to what they kinda need to make it, to make it work. But, you know, if you look at, you know, if you look at a, if you look at the, an aerial map and a future land use map, and, and... But, you know, if you look at, you know, if you look at, if you look at the, an aerial map and a future land use map, and you kind of understand basic, basic planning principles, you know, typically you have your main drive, that's your arterial road, you got your commercial. You know, as you move, if you, as you move off of that, you know, you start out with high-density residential, and then you slowly work to the bigger lots. This location, you know, with it being close to Wade Hampton, as well as some of the industrial, you know, BMW, you can get to relatively quick. It just makes a lot more sense to be a higher-density development townhome. Especially looking at the market, there's not a lot in this area. There's some in the area, but the median area, there's not much townhome units. So, so it's a really good opportunity to provide, you know, a different housing type, because people, there's a lot of people that are moving to these. I don't personally get it, but a lot of people like it, so.
Apparently, there's a lot being dealt.
It's, you know, it's, it's a lot, a lot of people from down here don't understand it. But I had a, Jay Martin, some of you are probably familiar, he lived in Baltimore, and he's, you know, his whole thing is, when he lived in Baltimore, he lived in a thirteen-foot wide unit. So a lot of places are like, twenty-one, twenty-two? Yeah, we'd love to have that, you know, that kind of thing, so.
All right, counsel. Others? Comments, questions, discussion?
Okay, this is going through, and then they'll have a meeting with the planning commission. Is that right, or with the?
We will, we will ask if they do, yes. We will, we'll set a meeting. We'll, we will shoot for, I know these folks are very busy as well, but we will, we'll shoot for next week, as early as possible, just so everybody can get to Thanksgiving. But we, we want to, if we can make it better, we'd like to make it better, so.
I did want to make one more comment. We talked about vinyl as a product, and I'm, I'm not opposed to vinyl, I just want it to be consistent with the area. I mean, we've, we've approved ERD in the past and used, you know, some of this language about, that it would blend and harmonize with the surrounding area. That's very subjective. And so, you know, if you say that you're going to go with vinyl, I'm just, you know, I would love to kind of better understand, like, why you want to go down that road. Is it because you think it is consistent with the area, and if you go to a, you know, a hardy board, or a brick, or a mixture of those, if that's going to add a certain amount per unit, and it might not be affordable to your target, or whatever, you know, I'd love to better understand your reasoning behind the decisions that you're making.
Right, no, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes, thank you.
First reading of ordinance number sixty-one dash twenty twenty. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Jessica and Joshua Robinson, located at one nineteen Pine Street from R twelve to DRD. Ms. Cotty?
Thank you. This is a rezoning request for one parcel. The request is to go from single-family to a DRD to allow for an accessory dwelling unit in an existing garage that is on the property. This is the current aerial of the site. Again, it's at the corner of Pine Street and Arlington. This is the current zoning map. Most of the surrounding area is R twelve. You can see the proximity to point set with C two and OD in the purple. And then the future land use map calls for traditional neighborhood. This is a current street view of the site. The picture on the left, you can see the building with the two garage doors. That is the garage in question to convert to the accessory dwelling unit. The square footage would stay the same for the primary structure. They are, they did include a small twelve-by-twelve deck in the back of that, as part of the statement of intent. Again, it would only be for this garage. If you can see in the picture to the right, that there is also another garage at the back of the property. That would not be impacted. And then this is a survey and kind of site plan that would be adopted with the ordinance that would, again, keep the footprint of the two structures in place. And then, as Mr. Martin mentioned, the statement of intent does require that the owner either live in the primary or the accessory dwelling unit. They are required to keep utilities running from the main house. And planning commission did hold a public hearing last Monday night, and they recommended approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
A show of hand. Is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? So noted. You available for questions if necessary?
Yes, sir.
Entertaining motion for the purpose of discussion? Second. Motion, second floor is open for discussion.
Will there be some type of requirement to make sure that there is adequate parking not on the street?
Yes, so it is, there is adequate area, given the existing garage, carport, and concrete driveway to accommodate four spaces.
Yes, sir. If you want to come to the podium, you can give us your name and address, please, sir.
Joshua Robinson, one nineteen Pine Street, Greer, two nine six five zero. The intent is to, for the garage, it'll have its own parking space, so it'll be a, it's a twelve-hundred-square-foot building, but it'll only be nine hundred square feet of living space, and there'll be a fifteen-by-twenty garage. That, that existing garage on the left that you see will remain where it is. The garage door to the right will go away, and there'll be windows there. And then the man door that you currently see there will be the actual entrance into the property. But there also will be an entrance from the garage into the property as well. So it'll have its own parking space, nine hundred square feet of living space.
We'll just have to see right there. There may be other questions. Thank you, sir. Others?
It's in the development agreement, then it would always be owner-occupied, correct?
Yes, the statement of intent says that either the primary structure, so the main house, or the accessory dwelling unit, that the owner would reside in one or the other.
Yeah, I got some calls about this, and I think the concern wasn't the intent of the rezoning. It was Airbnb's being. And after talking to our staff about it, there are a lot of folks that operate Airbnb's within our city, but we have no, there's not a lot that we can do.
It raises an interesting question, because we don't regulate people that rent their homes from doing it. Why would we do it in this particular case?
No, I'm just saying, that was, that was the intent.
I mean, I'm just bringing that up.
Right.
You know, I can, I can tell you half a dozen homes within walking distance of my house that people rent on the weekend, and they just move out and rent it, or go to another home, or whatever.
Right, and a lot of communities across, you know, North Carolina, South Carolina, and Georgia, especially around golf courses, the Masters, Pinehurst, all those, that people just move out and rent their spaces. I think the, and I don't know how you differentiate, but if you have a bed and breakfast, I guess that kind of falls under more hotel.
It does require that the owner live in the facility.
Well, and you have, you have commercial hood, buyer's discretion, and so on and so forth.
It's a little bit different animal.
Right.
You know, I, I, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. And the only other thing is, Mr. Martin likes to put, make his neighborhood a historical district, but it's not. I'm sorry. It, I mean, it's old. I live right beside this house.
But things the mayor's on, what's more historical than that?
A lot of historical people live there, I guess, okay.
So what was the intent? Who is to occupy the garage?
I mean, the intent of the owner is for the mother-in-law to move in. However, the statement of intent only really lays out that it is, that the owner has to live in either the primary or the other, so. I mean, that is the intent. However, they would be allowed to rent it out or have someone else live there, yes, if this were approved.
If the mother-in-law's suite didn't work out, go to something else, I guess.
Yes.
And this is an issue that I don't think, as far as Airbnb's, that we don't, we're not going to have in newer neighborhoods, because generally, the HOA prevents things like that. These are, since this is a, probably one of the original neighborhoods in the city.
I do think this is going to be something that's going to come up, that will come up more often as we continue to grow, and it, and the prices of land and development becomes more and more expensive. And I do hope that we will be, we are going to be addressing this in the UDO, correct?
Yes, I mean, so staff's intent is to include provisions for accessory dwelling units within the UDO with our new zoning districts. I would say that this area is designated as traditional neighborhood in the future land use map. And so, again, it's staff's proposal that areas that fall within that designation would be eligible for, for accessory dwelling units. I mean, again, the UDO would lay out, you know, provisions about how much of the lot it could take up, or maximum square footage, or height, or, you know, other regulations. But those currently don't exist. The only place accessory dwelling units are allowed right now, I believe, is in C two or C one, so.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, it would certainly be great for us to know if council does have concerns about accessory dwelling units, or has strong feelings either way, before we bring you the draft of the UDO. We would love to hear.
There's always been a concern. Gosh, many years ago, in District One, right down the street, same from my house, almost the same scenario. And I forget how it was resolved. I've been involved in construction projects, building a garage with an apartment above it. And city was, either Greer or other cities, you know, well, we'll know if somebody's, you know, they're going to come back, if somebody's going to live there. So, well, you know, you talk to the owner about it, and, you know, that, that's just, it's a concern, but the reality is there's very little that you can do to enforce something like, in my opinion.
I, I agree. I think, I think the questions that Mr. Martin raised tonight are certainly valid. I mean, I, I, I'll be honest, I intend to support this change, much like he said. I, I think there's a, there's a much bigger issue than surrounds this particular case right here. I mean, it, it, there are a number of issues just besides accessory dwellings that we have to address, either in the UDO or in some other way. And, you know, this is such a unique part of town that, to Mr. Martin's, we want, we want to preserve the history, but we also know that part of that uniqueness comes from the fact that by my count, just riding around on the golf cart, there's over a dozen already accessory structures that either are an apartment right now, or could support an apartment very easily. So, you know, in some regards, the cows are out of the barn. But that, that doesn't give us watch just to do anything that we want to down there. In this particular case, I know there has been some suggestions of deferring the decision, or a memoratorium, or whatever. I'm still close enough to having the rug pulled out from under me at Greenville County, that I'm not going to suggest that we do any of those options here tonight and move forward on this. But, having said that, I think it behooves council to go ahead and start this discussion with the planning staff in regards to accessory dwellings, because if you look at our current ordinance in regards to what can be built behind a home, those structures can go up to twenty percent of the total.
So twenty percent of the lot coverage, but there's no height or footprint, really.
So you can wind up, you can wind up with a building that is sixty by forty, and could be two stories. If you want to see one, I'll tell you where you can. And, and, you know, that's the type of thing that I think that we, we need to begin to think through, because it's not just about dwellings. It's, it's much about design and placement and, and all those kinds of things. And, you know, to Mr. Martin's point, yeah, we, we're, we're opening the DRD door on, on this project. But I think there are enough limitations in place in regards to the size of the lot and that sort of thing, in the agreement, if it changed hands, that we have some protection in that regard. But I think he makes a very valid and interesting point in that we, we don't want to open Pandora's box. And I guess, I guess my feelings about this is we don't know who's renting their home. We don't know who's renting the garage apartment behind their house. We don't know who's living in those. In a lot of cases, we know that there are new garages being built. Six months later, they come back in and put in the necessary plumbing and kitchen accoutrements to, to allow for, you know, a living space. And so, I, I think it's just a, I think it's a big ball of string. We need to start unwinding pretty quickly, because even though it may be six, eight, ten months before we have anything on, on, on record with the UDO, we can begin to get things in place. And I would suggest that, that depending on the vote tonight, that council go ahead and start planning on some workshop sessions to, to address this issue, so it could be at the forefront of the UDO. But, again, I don't prefer to, to defer on this one. I think it's in our best interest and the owner's best interest to move forward. If we have others that come up in the near future, we can, we can, we can decide how we're going to handle those, but that's, that's my feelings on it. And the DRD specifically states in the ordinance that, basically, it's a disclaimer that just because they award DRD here, they make it clear that that might not apply to something that looks very similar. So the door is open for them to say no in the actual ordinance. Others? Thoughts?
Do you agree with his interpretation of that, that it is truly case by case?
That's what it says.
I do, yes. Staff, I mean, that is staff's intent, that DRD is a case-by-case basis, and that the five criteria that we look at and the planning commission looks at is going to vary based on property location, surrounding lot sizes, surrounding uses, all sorts of factors.
First reading of ordinance number sixty-one dash twenty twenty-one. Other comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Let's move to the first reading of ordinance number sixty-two dash twenty twenty-one. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Claudio Marino Rios and Christian Hugo Rodriguez Viscotta, located at twenty-two oh four Country Club Road from DRD to R twelve.
Sure, this is a rezoning request, one that's kind of opposite of what you guys have been seeing a lot lately. And this was actually Zoned DRD, I believe, back in two thousand and fifteen for a potential townhome community. That project is, in essence, dead, and they have sold the property, and it is pending closing. So they, this is the aerial view of the site. Again, this is at the intersection of Country Club Road and Arlington. Next to it is the Hampton Ridge subdivision. The current zoning map that you see, again, that gold color is DRD. R twelve is kind of that light peach color, and then S one is the blue. This is designated as a traditional neighborhood in the future land use map. This is a current street view of the site. And again, they are wanting to go to R twelve, single-family. They have worked with CPW and have a no-serve letter. That sewer is not viable at this time, so their intent is intent is to subdivide into a minimum of a half acre lot to allow for septic. So it would be a maximum of four to five lots with R12 zoning. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing last Monday night and recommend approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
A show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative, the owner of the property with us this evening?
All right, thank you, sir. So noted. You available for questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Entertained a motion to receive ordinance number 63-20, no, excuse me, 2062. Let me start over. Entertained a motion to receive first reading of ordinance number 62-2021, comes to us with recommendation.
Sir?
Floor's open for discussion.
I'm relieved to hear you build an house, instead of townhomes.
Was the no serve letter issued because of the inability to get to the piece of property?
I am not certain, but we have a letter from Kevin Riordan saying that sewer is not viable at this time. And if it were to come in the future, that they would have the ability to connect. However, at this time, it's not. We, we require that just to have septic in the city. And that's why initially, they asked for R75, and just based on the number of lots that they wanted in the area, staff recommended R12, and they were willing, just based on the lot size that they were going to need to have.
Do you have additional information in that regard?
I have a site plan.
I'm just interested in why CPW wasn't going to be able to serve it. Is it a topography issue, or?
The closest sewer lines are, I think, 2,000, 1,000 feet away.
Okay, all right. Others? Questions? Comments? Discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Now, counsel, we can move to the first reading of ordinance number 63-2021. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Jeff Gossett, located at 300 Morrow Street from R12 to R10. Ms. Cotty?
Sure, this is a rezoning request for one parcel. Again, this is the aerial of the site. It is located near the intersection with Edwards Avenue on Morrow Street. And again, that larger corridor that you can see to the left is Memorial Drive. The current zoning map is here. Again, this area has kind of a variety of zoning and uses, as it is, kind of close to that Memorial Drive corridor. The golden color that you see to the south is R75, C2 is red, OD, Office District, is that purple color, and then kind of the greenish color to the southeast is RM1. This is designated as a traditional neighborhood in the future land use plan. This is a current street view of the site. And then this is a proposed survey slash site plan if this rezoning were to be approved. There is an existing house on the lot that would remain. It would be subdivided into two lots of almost equal size, and then a single family detached home would be allowed on that second lot. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing last Monday evening and recommended approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Counsel, first reading of ordinance number 63-2021 comes with approval from the Planning Commission. Entertained a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, we'll move to the final item of business before us this evening, the first reading of ordinance number 64-2021. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Butch Sims, located at 224 North Line Street Extension from RM to R5. Ms. Cotty?
Sure, this is a similar rezoning request, meant to have smaller lot size and subdivide for two single family homes. Again, this is located on North Line Street with proximity to Wade Hampton. This is an aerial view of the site. This is the current zoning map, kind of that greenish tan color that you see is all RM1 multifamily residential. C2 is in red, and then C3 highway commercial is that fuchsia color. And again, the large corridor at the top of the picture is Wade Hampton. The future land use map calls for suburban commercial, and on the edge of traditional neighborhood. And then this is the current street view of the site. Again, there is a house currently fronting North Line Street. And this lot does have double frontage on North Line and Bailey View. And so, the second picture that you see on the right is the vacant area in the rear of the lot, along Bailey View Street. This is a proposed survey site plan for the site if the rezoning were to be approved, again, splitting that lot and having two single family detached homes. And Planning Commission did hold a public hearing last Monday evening. They recommended approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
A show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative, the owner of the property with us this evening?
Thank you. You available for questions?
First reading of ordinance number 64-2021. This is, comes with a recommendation for approval. I'll entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion?
So moved.
Motion, second floor is open for discussion?
What they're proposing looks like something similar to two or three properties just below this.
Yes. I believe, 218 and then 115 have a very similar layout.
Discussion? Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, may I all assume we don't have anything in executive session this evening?
No, sir.
Counsel, be reminded that we have one meeting in December. That will be December the 14th. We will meet here, we will gather beforehand to have a reception for our departing council member, and then we will finish the year up with our last meeting in December. We stand adjourned.